Hi, we are testing the sound. Di, if you can hear us, can you please raise your virtual hand? Oh, we have a bunch of people have raised their hands. Perfect. We have sound.
It'll bring us back in the session. Whoa. Keep the mic way over there. So what we're going to do is look, address the resolution first, and then we have a presentation for Ms. Kestner, Ms. Lashewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move Resolution 3036 regarding declare confirming a local emergency, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection?
Is that 3036B?
Yes.
Yep, 3036B. Thank you, Ms. Hale.
Mr. Smith, do you have an objection?
For the purpose of a question, Madam Mayor.
We're going to have a presentation after this, so we'll probably answer all of your questions, maybe.
Can I ask, and then we can see? Okay, thanks. Could someone just let me know, like, what the, what the declaration, I know some of this, but just what the declaration does? And then the process and the, and you know, anyway, what hope and opportunities or resources it brings, and then also maybe like rough timeline?
Uh, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so a local declaration does a couple of things. The first thing it does is it allows us to circumvent our purchasing code. So as you know, in our purchasing code, we have a variety of different processes in place that are intended to make sure that we are getting the best price possible for the public when we procure goods and services. A local emergency declaration allows us to procure goods and services faster if necessary. And then it is also a step, not, not the only step, and not necessarily an exclusive step, but a step in, in a positive direction towards getting a disaster declaration at a higher level, at a state level or federal level, which could provide public and individual assistance depending on those levels of government.
Anything further? All right, any objection? Seeing none, that resolution passes. So now we'll go on to Ms. Kestner. That's, yep. Ms. Kestner.
Thank you, Mayor Wildin. All right, why are we not, other goes, okay. First of all, the reason why we had this unprecedented flooding event over the weekend was we have a unique phenomenon called a Yoka Loop. There's two dots above that. Oh, but I didn't have time to find that, that key with everything going on today. So a Yoka Loop is where flooding occurs. And though, when water levels rise and pressure builds, and in this case, a suicide basin of the Mendenhall Glacier collects water over time and then releases. This year, it was particularly large, likely, although we're not sure, because a big tongue of Mendenhall snapped off into the basin, making it larger than normal. That's what scientists are predicting as one of the reasons for this being the highest ever flooding. We have this flooding every year. If you, you are familiar with View Drive gets coned off and the campground gets evacuated. We have never flooded above 12 feet. So we know, we know what a 12-foot flood looks like. There was nothing to indicate that this flood would be anything more than that from the modeling, and the modeling is done by the National Weather Service. So lots of, of course, follow-up and questions there as we do as we look at that modeling in the future. So essentially, we were getting normal, normal rise of the river, albeit faster than, than normal. Until we got to about 12 feet, at 12 feet, CCFR and the Emergency Operations Manager flew to site. Everything still looked like it was in the corridor of the river. Storm drains were not backfilling yet. Then between 12 feet and 13 feet, the storm drains backfilled. The storm drains were acting to kind of absorb some of that, and things quickly escalated after there. So as everyone knows, at about 6:20 PM, we started losing trees and losing bank of the river. Um, CBJ stood up an Emergency Operations Center at 7:30 PM at JPD. During that time, of course, CCFR was responding, evacuating residences. JPD was responding, doing crowd control, getting people off the bridge, off from around the, the bank. So we were very fortunate for this event that there wasn't rain. Raid would have added additional additional water to that flooding event. But, you know, it, I guess, I guess, hearing that it could have been worse is certainly no consolation. It was, it was a pretty bad event. And things escalated very quickly. When we stood up the EOC, our partners were Red Cross Weather Service, the State Emergency Operations Center, Alaska Department of Transportation, Department of Environmental Health, I'm sorry, Department of Environmental Conservation. And we continue to have regular EOC meetings with that group. So I'm going to move on to a damage assessment. This is drone footage courtesy of Martin Murphy, and I'm just gonna, you've all seen lots of videos, lots of images over on, online. So I'm just going to let this play while I give you a damage assessment. View Drive, Meander River Road, and Riverside were all impacted. We have two homes that went into the river. One home that partially went into the river. Don't know yet how much of a loss that home is. There are another five structures that CDD has condemned. This, this represents eight condemned structures and about two dozen households. So a lot of homes are impacted. I think one one thing that's interesting is many homes, many more homes were impacted than just were damaged by the bank erosion. We also had flooding on View Drive and Meander Way. ADOT inspected all of our bridges, Brotherhood Bridge, Back Loop Bridge, and the pedestrian bridge, Diamond Park. The bridges themselves held pretty strong. Apparently, the pilings for those bridges, the Brotherhood Bridge, I think Director Goins, Goins said it's about 300 feet down to Bedrock. So that bridge isn't going anywhere. However, the approaches to those bridges, DOT is going to be monitoring because the span of, as the span of the river widens, they anticipate needing to do some more, more work there. We also had multiple fuel tanks spilling. DEC was notified. Coast Guard has been flying, looking for oil sheen, looking for debris, and DEC has been doing the same. You know, just the massive volume of, of water has probably mitigated seeing a lot of those immediate effects. The, the homeowners have done a great job in reporting directly to DEC when they have a spill. And so when, when they have a spill or maybe a disappearing fuel tank, as the case may be, so really want to appreciate the homeowners for that. We do have that phone number up in our press releases and our website for reporting. I'll just continue to talk about damage to CBJ and infrastructure. The damage really was mostly to private infrastructure and private homes. Unfortunately, in this, in this instance, we did have three lift stations that were totally submerged, which means we did not have sewer to those those homes. There's still one lift station on View Drive that is vulnerable. The View Drive lift station is functional. Residents can use that, but we are working on repairs to try to make sure that's a, a long-term repair. It has a short-term repair. The treatment plant also lost property and lost fence line, had to move some infrastructure back in the middle of the night to prevent um, to prevent losing some vehicles, but just a little property loss. We will need to be looking at where our outfall line is for the treatment plant. We will be looking at needing to reinforce that. Not probably an emergency repair, but definitely something we'll want to do before fall storms. And Diamond Park Field House, I have a picture here in a little bit. I'll show you some damage there. Our storm drains, we have storm drain pipes that outfall into the river. Those, again, some of them are dangling. We're, we're going to need to look at all of CBJ property along the river, just like homeowners are going to be looking at it. Likely, there'll be coordination involved, neighbors doing projects together. The storm drains were full of silt, so vac trucks have been vacuuming all that up, really from a debris perspective, and I'm going to move on to pictures here since we've seen this. From a debris perspective, Mother Nature took care of a lot of the debris removal in the right away and on the streets. This is just an image. Again, these are all images you've all seen, but this is the house. This is, this house right here, that has been the star of, of the show. And if you can see in this image, how far back that is from the bank, it's probably 50 feet back from the bank. So really, an unpredictable event. These, of course, are condominiums C and D. You can see how the, that structure, while still standing, has been severely undermined. Meander Way, this is on Sunday morning. So again, Meander Way normally does not see any flooding. It's, it's really unprecedented event for, for the river. Again, we have all seen this picture, and this is the an aerial of the Diamond Field House with just showing some of the erosion there. And so Parks and Recreation put that together. I mostly wanted to show that just to kind of emphasize the dynamic nature of, of the river. One thing I want to mention about how kind of unprecedented the event is. So we've seen a 12-foot flood event. We're, we're able to manage a 12-foot flood event. But the difference between 12 feet and almost 15 feet is 180%. So think of it like a Richter scale, where it goes up exponentially. So the volume of water really is tremendous, tremendously more than our, even our peak flood stage. So what are we caring for right now? We are, we've entered into the recovery phase. I want to thank Deputy Director Koch, who ran Incident Command for Response while I was in travel status. But right now, we are, we are working on recovery. So one thing that we're trying to work with residents is getting a damage assessment. We're asking people to send all emails to this flood response email that has been established. And the EOC will be responding to that and trying to collect information, give information. At this point, we don't know of any sheltering needs, but if there are sheltering needs, please email that email, and we can, we can coordinate. You know, this community, it's a wonderfully hospitable community, and friends and neighbors are, are really caring for each other. We, we did site business day, and I can't tell you every property owner as, as impacted as they were. I'm sure there, there are, those of you in the audience was just really had a lot of gratitude for their friends and neighbors. So thank you for caring for, for, for our residents. We also have been feeling a lot of national media attention. Deputy Manager Barr is running all media communications, so he's talked with the LA Times, New York Times, Fox News, and I'm sure others. One piece that we are trying to work on is waste disposal. That's going to be a really key piece. We've got our tiny window of Saturday delivery, so we've been coordinating with waste management on any ways that we can help, help residents with either expanding those hours. One, you know, the challenges that they have, of course, is staffing. They also want to make sure that there's no hazardous waste in that material. So we're working with them to provide information on when the structures were built. It's likely that most of these structures were built after asbestos was widely used. So just providing them with that information. They will be sending staff this week to, you know, to help, help with waste disposal. Another thing that, that CBJ is rebuilding, lost land or anything like that, but there are some really immediate safety needs. And so we ask that you, you know, contact the permit center, and permit center staff are there to help work through, you know, any, we're really notification, it's a waiving the pre-notification. So you don't need to get CDD's stamp of approval. You need to keep us informed of what you're doing, and then we are going to work with you to work with the Army Corps on permitting. They also have waived pre-notification. I think the mayor and Senator Sullivan had something to do with that, so we can, we can thank them. There's still, you're still required to follow all the, all the, the applicable laws. It's just that we're trying to make things faster, and the resolution that the Assembly just passed tonight will help us get expedited permitting with Alaska DNR. We also, of course, will be coordinating with homeowners and their insurance agents. So RISK, Chelsea Wallace and RISK will be providing photo documentation, anything that the EOC has that can help support the community's work as they work with their with their insurance companies. I know that this is a challenging time, and, and we're all learning a lot about what we may or may not have coverage for. I've certainly looked at mine. And the last item I just want to let you know that we are working on is organizing efforts of assistance. We have had community members email us, call, how can we help? We've had Kensington Mine, Greens Creek, JSD, Dawson Construction, all contact us. So we're trying to really organize that in a thoughtful manner. CBJ won't be coordinating voluntary response, just not a great role. We're not efficient at it, and there are lots of reasons why we shouldn't be doing it. But we are trying to connect people with those organizations. I know the Red Cross is standing up their operation. They're still ramping up their response. Assemblymember Jones is the EOC liaison for that, so he may be able to speak to that more. Salvation Army has food boxes prepared for impacted families. They also will accept donations. St. Vincent's is accepting donations, and we'll have community members navigating the distribution of goods. So we're just going to, working through all of those details, and we will be communicating with the public via press release and via the homepage where there's a website setup. So I just talked a lot, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Who has questions? Ms. Lashewski.
Hey, one, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kestner. That was really great information. Do we know how many fuel tanks? Is there anybody that knows how many fuel tanks went in the water? I know people smelled fuel in vast areas of the borough. So do, do we know that, or does DEC know that?
We do not know how many fuel tanks. I can certainly ask DEC what they have found, but you know, what they have recovered, but I do not know that.
Other question? Follow up?
Follow up.
Well, actually, this is just about the Yoka Loop monitoring. I mean, I think Mr. Barr, you mentioned that earlier when I was speaking to you. The city's program with that and the local weather service, is that a standard feature in the nation? Is, you know, how, how are, are advanced warnings that we had, which obviously this time the, the predictions were not cor, not exactly correct?
Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As far as I know, I'm not, I'm not aware of other Yoka Loop monitoring forecasting efforts. forecasting efforts in the nation or in fact anywhere. We have been partnering for some time now with the Weather Service and with the university and other science-oriented individuals that have an interest in this topic. And it has been a good and an effective partnership. There's an excellent summary of that work if anyone is interested in it on a weather.gov website. If you just search weather.gov and Suicide Basin, you can see that for yourself. There is also an excellent link that was done back in 2017 on that website that will guide you through how all of that works. And and despite our happiness with that partnership and our appreciation for the individuals that do that work, it is an imperfect science. And as Ms. Kestner said, you know, early indications are is that there is something that happened underneath Suicide Basin, a tongue of the glacier perhaps being split off that increased the volume of water that could be held by that basin and then released once the glacial ice dam, you know, enabled it to drain. So imperfect science and certainly more conversations for us to have over the coming months to see if there's anything that we can do to improve that forecasting model for future seasons.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr, Ms. Hale, and then we'll hold it up.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for everything that you've done during this terrible time. My question just builds on just exactly what you were saying. So prediction and potential mitigation are things that are on the minds of a lot of people. You don't just slow down a glacier, and you don't just like drill a hole. But I think I will be really interested, and I know the Assembly and the entire community will really be seeking experts and expertise looking at this so that we can predict with some certainty what will be happening in our community. I live a block from the damage, and I can see very easily, because I watched what happened on Saturday, and I can see very easily how it could just sneak right up to my house and many other people's houses. So I just am really interested moving forward, and I know we don't, we're not doing that now. But I want to make sure that we continue to monitor this and tap the best experts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hale. We'll hold up.
Yeah, I was just curious about the condominium on Riverside. It almost looks since the river has receded that if it were to fall in, that it would block the river. The size of it, it's huge. What is the, is there any plan from the condominium owners or from folks? Any thoughts on that?
Who? Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Mayor. The condominium association, we understand, is working with a contractor, engineer to try and figure out how to stabilize the building. I talked to the contractor this morning, and he thought that they could save the building. From a permitting standpoint, that is somewhat complex. We have given emergency authorization to protect structures from further damage, which is not the same as authorizing work to make something habitable. But the declaration or the resolution you passed that will go to the governor will let the governor also waive some of the permitting rules. And the association with their engineer and contractor will then try to navigate repairs. I do not think that it would block the river, certainly not at this stage. There's so much water in the river. Our man-made efforts are small compared to the force of nature right now.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, thanks to everyone who was working throughout the weekend and really heartening to hear the community stepping up to help people in need. Obviously, some massively devastating damage there. I mean, did this, did this event, I mean, has the river now returned to its normal channel, or is it forever changed? And I imagine it's still too, we still don't know. But I mean, the conditions that allowed this event to release so much water, do we know if they, do they still persist or just unknown if if it could happen again?
Ms. Kestner.
I'll just chime in on has the river returned to normal. So normal at this time of year is five to six feet. It's at about seven feet. So it's not at its normal level, but it's on its way there. However, the path of the river has changed according to, you know, it is a new river. So it has a new route. It has new debris, new obstacles. So we want to make sure that the public knows, do not, you know, it's not a river to take your kayak down, just like you did in the past, and to exercise extreme caution. So I just want to make sure I get that, that point across. As far as to the point about predicting in the future, I don't have a lot of insight on that, but City Manager Watt looks like he does.
Thank you, Ms. Kestner, Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Mayor. There is no normal. So the river is going to meander over the course of time. It is not going to stay fixed at any one location. So we can expect continued change. So we've heard a lot over the years on the issues that homeowners have had with bank protection. So as the land rises and the river cuts, it wants to get wider, which threatens homes and bank protection measures. And this event has just accelerated a lot of those processes. A tremendous amount of sands and gravels and silts have been mobilized and moved by the river. And I think we're just going to have to watch it and see if it falls into a new generally predictable path, or if that takes a season or two to shake out. But we should expect more change as we move forward.
Mr. Bryson, and then Ms. Glashewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Storm drains and storm drain backfilling, do we know at what level or what level the river has to be in order for to start having backflow into the storm drains? And is a storm drain backflow prevention device even a real, is that even a thing? Because one of the houses that I did see today, they believe that the majority of their flooding because of their location came from storm drain backfill.
Ms. Kestner.
Yeah, so to answer some of your question, let's see. At twelve feet, the last flooding event that we had at twelve feet did not have any storm drain impact. In fact, at this event, at almost thirteen feet, we still were not seeing the storm drains being filled. So really, the unprecedented nature just meant that the storm drains were getting submerged and filling. I do not know about, you know, backflow prevention in this instance. And I'll hand it over to Manager Watt. And in this instance, though, the storm drains really did provide a, I mean, they provided that cushion to absorb some of the water between twelve and thirteen feet. And then it exacerbated it once it hit thirteen feet, which is why we saw even more flow.
Mr. Watt, you want to add to that?
Mary, just in the Menon Hall Valley, we have large storm drainage infrastructure, thirty inch, thirty-six inch diameter pipes. And their job is to get water to the river and out of the neighborhoods. And it's, you know, I think when those pipes were built, mostly in the mid-eighties, we had a different theory on the storm drainage needs of the community. And now that we know what a new record flood event looks like, it's probably time to be introspective and think about that system and whether a backflow on it is practical or achievable on that large of a diameter of a pipe. The difficulty comes is you watch your storm drains to work, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time getting water away in this very small event, having some backflow measure and and hoping that it works can be kind of tricky. But I think, given that we now have a new idea of what a record event looks like, it's time to reassess what we have.
Ms. Glashewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one thing about the redevelopment on the river and the development on the river. For much of the last decades, the rules have been no build till fifty feet. So those structures, when they were built, at least were at least fifty feet from the river, and many of them more. So now some of them are one foot from the river, so that is going to be challenging to rebuild those things so close, given the new river and the new changes. But yeah, they were, those things were not close to the river, at least fifty feet.
Thank you for that question.
I just got this text from somebody watching. Is there a central collection point for people finding items of, I know that they're finding, I see on Juneau Community Collective, they're turning in a bunch of stuff that people have found, and people are really thankful who have lost those things. But is there a central location for all that stuff?
Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's a great question. We have had some folks reach out to us when it appeared that we could help. So a good example of that is, you know, I had someone yesterday evening find a set of keys, and on that keychain was a Juneau Parks and Rec card. And so we were able to reconnect those things. So I think the best we have on that point right now is that if people have found something that they think we could, through CBJ Resources, help reconnect with an individual owner to reach out to us at floodresponse@junau.gov. And we will do our best to do that. I also think that, you know, social media has done some work there as well, and that can be effective, too.
Mr. Bryson.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to include that it was, I think, in twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen that the river made its last change. There was a big old Oxbow that went up around behind the post office and around where the new senior center is. And it was in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen that Oxbow blew out. And now you have a, when you're driving down over Brotherhood Bridge, you can actually go when you can see the walking bridge now. Had that not blown out before, it would have blown out during this event, and that could have had even more, because it had consequences when it blew out with that, whatever summer that did. So just to point that out, that one, you are correct, Mr. Watt, this river is ever-changing. And what do we do next? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And I apologize for the quickness of trying to pass the resolution. But why Ms. Kestner was during her report, I had signed the resolution and the Madam Clerk had, so that's already to the governor's office. They've been waiting for it. I can't speak for the governor. They have criteria they have to look at, but it's already at the governor's office. So hence the haste. So apologize for rushing you, Mr. Smith. So anyway, anything more on this topic? Ms. Gladys Shewski.
Just, I don't know about flood insurance or the rules about that, and whether individuals, homeowners had flood insurance or didn't. Does anyone know if they didn't have flood insurance? Are there any, I didn't have flood insurance, and now I can do X thing? Do we know anything about that?
Ms. Kestner, you want to try that? Although I don't know that it's in our purview.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably not in our purview unless we are able to get individual assistance for homeowners. So this resolution that you passed tonight will request individual and public assistance. And then that escalates through the chain, and the state may be able to provide some individual assistance. And then if it triggers a federal designation, FEMA would provide assistance. It is extremely rare for FEMA to provide that assistance. It wasn't provided, for example, in the two thousand twenty landslide event that occurred all over Southeast. So just to kind of manage that that expectation with FEMA. It's also really burdensome from a paperwork perspective. So no doubt homeowners will be duly frustrated going through some of those processes. So that's a long way of saying we are doing what we can to advocate for individual homeowners, no matter their insurance status, but that's kind of the process that that takes.
Thank you. And I have heard that if you do have insurance, make sure you check with your agent, and you may, before you do anything, you may need to get a gesture there. So that might be difficult. Remember that the banks are all undercut. Please stay away from the banks. We've already had some people slide into the river a little bit and had to be helped back out. Mr. Barr, you want to add anything?
Just a brief note, and this is something that we'll have out on an information release, if not tonight, then soon. If homeowners, as Ms. Kestner said, that the path towards individual assistance can be long and complex. And we would certainly recommend that homeowners that are engaged in expenditures and salvage operations, repairs, that sort of thing, that they keep their receipts and pictures of that work on the chance that we are able to get some sort of individual assistance at the state or federal level.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. And one other thing I forgot to mention, we have been in contact with the landfill and trying to get the ability to help take debris there. So that's still a work in progress. Ms. Koch is working with them right now after a couple of conversations earlier today. So hopefully, we can get, do something that we can get some help for everybody there. So with that, we have no public participation on non-agenda items, so I'm going to do something really weird. Because before I hand it over to Ms. Gladys Shewski, so before we adjourn, I'm going to ask the staff if they would mingle with folks and answer any questions, because I know people in the audience have questions. And Mr. Jones, if you would step down and put your red cross hat on, please answer any questions, and so we'll give everybody a few minutes to do that before we adjourn. All right, I'm done breaking rules for the night. So with that, um, the special assembly meeting is almost adjourned. We heard that they're having trouble hearing us in the room. So please speak up a little louder than you normally do. We're adjourned and regrettably I am getting on a plane here shortly. So I am going to leave you.
Well, when Madam Clerk says she's ready for the next meeting, we'll go. So just a couple of minutes.
For those of you in the room, if you were trying to get a copy of the agenda, it is, there's additional copies in the back of the room. We also have additional copies of packet materials at the back of the room and, um, we will be grabbing a few more of those in just a moment from the print.
Okay, we will call the Assembly Committee of the whole meeting.
Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor, we would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juno is on Klingon land and wish to honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than 10,000 years, Alaskan native people have been and continue to be integral to the well-being of our community. We're grateful to be in this place, a part of this community and to honor the culture, traditions and resilience of the Klingon people. Goodness Tish.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Clerk will note the role.
Madam Chair, just to note, we have all Assembly members present except for Mayor Weldon and Christine Wall.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Anyone has? Uh, no changes. Approval of minutes, November 8th and February 13th. Anyone have any comments on the minutes or approved as written? Okay, no objection. So we'll go to the first topic. Uh, we have some presenters, some of whom are on the East Coast. So they'll be on Zoom and there they are. Oh, there you go. Uh, and, uh, in the room, uh, Mr. Cohen, you want to come up to, there's no microphone there. So come, uh, go there next to Mr. Barr. If that's a, uh, there's no microphone there. Is that, you can go there. There's often a microphone there, but it's, there's not one there tonight. So, um, this is, uh, um, Mr. Cohen has talked to several of seven members about this idea, uh, an idea to have rapid adoption of heat pumps. We know we have some, uh, goals as a community regarding climate and we also have, uh, always looking for ways to reduce people's energy costs. So, um, Mr. Cohen, if you would introduce yourself and, uh, who you have with you?
Um, uh, I'm Stuart Cohen. I live on Star Hill. I'm the co-chair of Alaska Interfaith Power and Light, and I also run an e-commerce business. And, uh, the other presenters are Chris Rose of Renewable Energy Alaska Project. He's in Anchorage. Uh, John Michael Cross of, um, the EESI. He is in, um, Minnesota and, uh, also, uh, Miguel Yanis, his partner who's in DC. And, uh, also Jonathan Moscatello of Dyke and Comfort Technologies. And, uh, Chris Rose is going to begin.
Great, thank you. And if you, um, gentlemen, would identify yourself for the record when you speak and, um, that'd be great. So, uh, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. And appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Chris Rose and I'm the Executive Director of Renewable Energy Alaska Project or REEP. And I'm speaking to you from my home tonight between Sutton and Chiclin outside of Anchorage. Education and Advocacy Group with the mission of promoting renewable energy and energy efficiency. We've been around since 2004. We're a 70-member organization. So we have a wide variety of energy stakeholders from around the state who are dues-paying members. They elected 21-member Board of Directors and we currently have 13 employees, including Clay Good, who works out of our Juno office. We work in the areas of technology, policy, financing of people as it relates to clean energy. Uh, as, as far as technology goes, we're really just translating technology for the public and policymakers through a number of workshops and conferences and public presentations and private meetings and, and also through our website. Uh, we've also been promoting state policy that promotes clean energy for almost 20 years, including programs that finance renewable energy and energy efficiency. Among our successes, uh, in the past are getting the Renewable Energy Fund established, which has brought over $300 million in state appropriations, uh, to leverage another $300 million in private and federal money to build over 90 renewable energy projects around the state. We were also the primary advocate for the $640 million in state appropriations that went to Alaska Housing Finance Corporations, weatherization and home rebate programs that have served more than 50,000 households in Alaska. Finally, we really work a lot on capacity building around the state. We're involved in many STEM education and training initiatives in Alaska to promote the workforce that's going to be necessary for Alaska to make an energy transition. Using on-bill financing to accelerate the transition from heating oil to more efficient heat pumps is a great opportunity for Juno that REEP hopes the Assembly will consider carefully. We see energy efficiency as what we call the first fuel. If we can use less energy to get the same amount of work done, we should be doing it. Collectively, REEP is estimating the Alaskans are spending about $6 billion with a B, $6 billion per year on heating, electric generation and transportation. And unfortunately, we're also estimating we're wasting about 20% of that energy. So over a billion dollars worth of energy a year. Uh, we are often using inefficient heating devices and heat pumps are a very highly efficient technology that have been proven effective in Juno. Heat pumps allow consumers to use locally generated renewable electricity to efficiently produce heat for their homes. Switching to heat pumps in Juno also would allow individuals and the Juno community at large to reduce their dependent, dependence on expensive and imported heating oil. If we assume for a minute, there are 6,000 Juno homes that are currently using an average of about 700 gallons of oil a year at the current price of $4.50 a gallon. That means the community is currently exporting nearly $19 million out of Juno every year to import heating oil. So that's a big chunk of money. Using heat pumps would offer a significant opportunity to keep a large percentage of those dollars recirculating in the Juno economy, while at the same time allowing individual consumers to take advantage of currently available generous federal tax credits to purchase these pumps and also the ability to save more than $1,500 per household every year on their heating bills. The primary barrier to people using heat pumps is the upfront cost. And that's where on-bill financing could come in. If people are able to easily and affordably borrow the upfront capital necessary to install a heat pump, they'll do it. Alaska law specifically allows utilities to develop on-bill financing programs, including Juno's water and wastewater utility. I know that other speakers are going to go into the details of the proposed on-bill financing program, but it's clear to REEP that the internal rate return on an on-bill financing loan is very attractive. If Juno sets up an on-bill financing program for heat pumps, it's a win-win-win. First, individuals in Juno, including low and moderate income consumers, will save on their heating bills and they'll have more than enough money every month to repay their loans. Second, millions of dollars will stay in Juno and provide a boost to the local economy. And finally, an on-bill financing per pumps will create a significant number of good-paying jobs to install those devices. We respectfully request the Assembly to carefully consider the creation of an on-bill financing program at the water and wastewater utility to bring all those benefits to the community. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cohen, you keep going. And if any Assembly member has any question, anytime, just wave me down, but, uh, we'll keep going.
Okay. So Chris talked a bit about the big picture, but, uh, I'd like to break it down on to what on-bill financing means for individuals in Juno. The average heat pump after a $2,000 federal tax credit pays for itself in energy savings in about three years. Over the 20-year life of the heat pump, total savings are more than $27,000. That's a pretty big chunk of somebody's retirement or their kid's college education. However, if you don't happen to have $6,000 to $8,000 lying around to drop on a heat pump, you're locked out of those benefits. So how do we quickly make heat pumps available to everyone in Juno? We've developed a rapid adoption program to do exactly that and on-bill financing is a critical component. Before I describe the rest of the program, I want to talk about what on-bill financing would look like for the city in this context. All the city does is put a number on the water bill. It doesn't qualify people for loans. It doesn't provide money. It doesn't do customer service and it doesn't get involved in the finances or staffing of the program. Every month, the rapid adoption program sends the city a list of information in a file and the CBJ IT department runs a script that ingests those numbers into people's water bills. At the end of the month, the IT department runs another script that extracts those payments and the city writes a check to the program for that amount. If people have questions about their heat pump payment, they'll call the program, not the city. If a person doesn't pay their bill, they would be subject to shut off according to the same protocols already in place at the water department. However, that's extremely rare. I provided you with letters from four entities that currently offer on-bill financing, one of whom offers it on their water bills. Three of them have had zero defaults and one of them had a handful. That's more than 2,500 loans totaling $42 million with a default rate measured in the thousandths of a percent. The city has no risk here. But why do we need on-bill financing for rapid heat pump adoption? There's two reasons. First, on-bill finances, financing is an extremely useful sales tool. You can qualify people for it simply by looking at their 12-month water bill payment history. If it's good, they're eligible. That means you can qualify someone on the phone in 60 seconds with no credit checks or applications to fill out. That eliminates a significant barrier to adoption and you still get that default rate in the thousandths of a percent. The second reason is that on-bill financing helps pay for the program. The Rapid Adoption Program is designed to pay for itself. Let me give you an overview of how it works. Rapid heat pump adoption depends on two things: creating demand and fast economical installations. Without both those elements, you end up with long delays and escalating prices, and that slows down adoptions. That's our current situation in Juneau. The program's principal job is generating new leads and making sure those leads close. We'll use a combination of digital strategies, conventional marketing, and also work closely with nonprofits like churches, tribal groups, environmental groups, condo associations, and mobile home parks. We'll build awareness, pre-sell, qualify people for on-bill financing when needed, and follow up on jobs that don't close. More importantly, we address the labor shortfall that's currently slowing installation. We do that by creating volume and providing a guaranteed number of jobs to partner installers. That volume enables them to dedicate a team exclusively to the program's heat pumps. They can optimize their workflow and greatly increase the pace of installs. We work with the installer to ensure the highest standards and resolve any problems that arise, and all financed jobs are fully warranted for parts and labor. I also want to clarify in passing that on-bill financing will also be available to jobs by non-partner installers. Okay, so I mentioned that this program pays for itself, and this is also where on-bill financing is critical. There's two income streams to this program. First, Dyken will support the program with a rebate for each unit that the program installs. Second, the program will earn income on money loaned out via on-bill financing. It's an integral part of what makes the program self-sustaining. So to summarize, on-bill financing is a safe, powerful tool that enables us to help Juneauites to lower their heating costs, accumulate wealth, and also gets us much closer to our climate goals. Residential heating is 18% of Juneau's carbon footprint, and with on-bill financing, we can address it aggressively at virtually no cost to the city. Enabling on-bill financing is not a heavy lift. It's a simple matter of adopting templates that are already being used successfully all over the country, and we have expert consultants standing by, willing to help us with that at no charge. So our request is that you set up a process to develop the rules surrounding on-bill financing and then implement those results. So thanks for hearing me out. Now I'd like to introduce my colleague, Jonathan Moscatello of Dyken Comfort Technologies. He's the co-designer of this project and has been a great source of information and support.
Good evening, Assembly. Thank you for having me. My name is Jonathan Moscatello. I'm speaking to you from my home in Oregon. And I work for Dyken Comfort Technologies, as Stuart mentioned. My role at the company is called Utility Relations Manager, and I report to a group called the Environmental Promotions Office, which is directly responsible to the Board of Directors of our international corporation. And specifically, we track the performance of our company towards fulfilling our environmental and social responsibility goals. So it sounds like a mouthful, but really, I just want to impress upon you that Dyken is behind the effort that Stuart is talking about for a couple of reasons. First off, the city of Juneau provides a really unique opportunity for my company to develop a model and to work to repeat the, what we hope to do in Juneau and other cities around the US that have a carbon neutrality goal or a carbon emissions reduction goal, but struggle to try to affect change there. There's so many ways, of course, one can address the goals. And buildings and heat pumps are a fairly easy way to address those goals, and so we have a desire as a company to participate in this, but also we have goals at our company. And our Board of Directors look at profit and revenue growth as equally important as they look at our performance on our environmental and social responsibility goals. So that's why we're really excited to participate in this program. In our experience working around the country, on-bill financing is one of the most powerful tools to mobilize homeowners to participate, to get a heat pump when they don't have one. The value proposition or why one would do this is super strong. Stuart mentioned many of them, as did Chris Rose. However, the out-of-pocket expense is, for many homeowners, a barrier to participating in any kind of program that they might be offered. Simply put, on-bill financing, particularly the style that you have the ability to do in Alaska, is a way to make the value proposition of a heat pump something that people really don't have to think too much. They can just say, why wouldn't I do this? And go down then the path of paying for it over time on one of their utility bills. In our experience in other parts of the country, when these kinds of on-bill financing programs are present and they're easy to enroll, participation in getting a heat pump is profoundly influenced. And so because of these reasons, Dyken is excited to participate. You know, Juneau is a Dyken city. I've walked around the older neighborhoods behind, up the hill from the capital, and it's really wonderful to see Dyken heat pumps heating the homes there. It's, we're excited to participate in the future that Stuart is working for and the team, and we were willing to invest in that to support the effort through the marketing funds that we make available through our sales channel. And I'll end my statements by saying that, you know, change like the type that we're asking to made with on-bill financing, it seems like a little hard, like you're being asked to take on a new task. However, the cities and utilities that have taken this on in other markets that we work in find that once the implementation is done, that it's really something that they're ratepayers or the people paying the bills actually really enjoy. So it becomes a great service for the homeowners. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope that we're able to work together in the future on this wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cohen, you want to keep going with your last speaker before we do questions?
Yes, the last speaker is John Michael Cross of the EESI. John?
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is John Michael Cross. I'm coming to you from St. Paul, Minnesota. Thanks for taking the time on. Why now? It's been a tough couple of days. I'm a project manager at the Environmental and Energy Study Institute, EESI. We are a Washington DC-based nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting sustainable societies by advancing science-based solutions for climate and energy challenges. I co-lead EESI's Access Community Savings Project that provides local technical assistance to utilities and communities, mostly in smaller or rural settings, to build programs that reduce household energy burns in ways to promote equity. One of the core elements of that work is inclusive on-bill financing. We have helped launch more than a dozen programs around the country. And our services are always free, as our time is covered by private foundation grants. And before I go further, I'd like to acknowledge my colleague, Miguel Yanez Bernuevo, who's joining us here tonight. He is an OBF expert with a decade of experience on this topic, and he'll be available during the Q and A. The EESI team, myself included, had the pleasure of working with members of this community for the past five years or so on a variety of clean energy issues, not just on-bill. A lot of that work has been with the Juneau Commission on Sustainability and Alaska Heat Smart. It's work that we've always enjoyed a great deal, and we admire all the good work that's happening here on heat pumps and other issues. On a personal note, I grew up in a Coast Guard family, and we were stationed on Kodiak Island for a portion of my youth, and so I always welcomed the chance to return to Alaska for work, even if it's virtual like this. So I'm someone that's spent a decade designing and helping to launch on-bill programs, and with that, I want to stress that OBF is a broad tool. It can be designed in many different ways. And we at ESI are not an advocate of any one specific kind of model. We believe that there are any number of ways to use OBF to deliver impactful results. Programs that Stuart cited earlier are all programs that we have helped set up. Each program we've worked on is unique. They've each brought something new to the table. Their communities either had specific needs, the programs were tailored to meets, but also local leaders would bring interesting ideas forward that we wouldn't have thought of on our own, and they made those programs better. If anything, what we do is work to pass on these innovative ideas and know-how from community to community, help build programs to be the best they can be, while also making sure that the interlocking parts all make sense together. What we have learned in the many programs we have worked on and the many more that we have studied is that programs can take many forms and still be successful as long as care is put into the participant's experience. So I want to stress that OBF is not some silver bullet. It's a financing tool that can be a key part of an energy program, but it needs to be designed well, and it needs to be paired with other quality components that meet your needs and goals. With the program like we're discussing, there are two important pieces. There's program delivery, and then there's the financing or incentives that are going to be available to participating households. And you need a program design that delivers successful outcomes for households that can pay for the project completely out of pocket, that there's no need for financing. Those households still need to be provided with good guidance to design the right plan for their home, help access quality contractors, and help make sure that that work is installed properly and that the estimated savings are realized. The financing piece then allows households that don't have the ability to pay out of pocket, and those that can't make use of traditional rebates or wait for tax incentives, it gives them an opportunity to participate and not be left behind. So quality program delivery paired with an inclusive financing tool, in our experience, is the best way to deliver results for everybody. I won't pretend that OBF is the easiest or the simplest type of energy incentive program. There's always issues to work out. We at EESI can answer those questions and help you sidestep issues that have tripped up other communities. But the upside to figuring this all out is you'll be able to help lower-middle and middle-income households that are often left out of energy programs because they make too much to qualify for income-based programs, but don't have enough reserve cash to pay out of pocket, even with a decent rebate. OBF paired with good program delivery and unlock this opportunity to deliver savings to many that would otherwise trudge ahead with high-energy burdens. Thanks for your time and look forward to your questions.
Okay, so Mr. Cohen, you're done? Yeah?
Oh.
Ready for questions?
Ready for questions.
Okay, Ms. Hale had her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. It's good to see you, and thanks for everybody dialing in. I guess I have two questions, and they follow directly on what your last speaker spoke to. Coupled with on-bill financing, there also has to be the program, and there have to be installers, and there have to be electricians, and there has to be designers. And my question is, one, would this program build on the work and work with what Heat Smart has done in Juneau? And then, two, that's a lot of installers and electricians, and I know because I had a heat pump installed this year that, yes, took me two years to save for, so that issue is real. But it took me two months to wait until I had an electrician that could come out to actually hook it up because I hadn't lined that up in advance. So are you, how are we going to have all these people magically appear in Juneau that know what they're doing?
Okay, so that's two questions.
Mr. Cohen.
One is, how will we work with Alaska Heat Smart, and the other is, how will we solve the labor supply bottleneck? So I'll approach, I'll talk about the second question first. We have a really different approach to solving that problem. This is not really a workforce development program. We feel that if you have one team, and typically it would be, in this case, what we're thinking of is one electrician, one installer. They're on the same truck every day. They're putting in the same limited amount of machines every day, and they have all the tools on their truck, everything they need. I know a, I've talked quite a bit with an installer in Maine, and he has two teams. One of his teams, his most experienced team, can do 10 to 12 installs like that per week, and his other team can do eight to 10. So we feel that rather than try and bring in a lot of people, we want to streamline things, take away things like bidding that take up a lot of time. And for example, post the cost of the job on the website, have a flat rate, so you know when you, when you look at the website, it's this amount of money, it's whatever, $6,000, $7,000, whatever, maybe it includes the electricity. And so we feel strongly that one team can do maybe 400 to 500 installations per year, and that's been borne out by people that I've talked to in, again, in Maine. That doesn't mean they'll do it the first year because there's a learning process, but that's our way of solving this problem. So as far as with Heat Smart, we have a very different approach from Alaska Heat Smart. We're a high-volume installation program. We don't offer, we don't have, you know, some of the things that they do, offering consultants and that sort of thing. We handle that a different way. But one way we could work for them, with them, is with information gathering. I did talk to Andy, I don't know, probably a couple of months ago. We can share information. They have kind of a backlog of installs that we could probably get done for them. And we, because we're working at streamlining and the installation process, that helps with all the people that they also interest. And also, we don't address people, low-income people who don't have the money to do a heat pump, and that's what they are doing. So we're in parallel with them.
Mr. Brison, and then Waha Giduk, and then Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I wanted to know a little bit about, like, the rebate that Dyken's offering, the interest rate that a person would pay on a program, and then what is the timeframe that we would expect that unit to be paid off?
We're looking at a seven-year payment period. I did extensive financial modeling for this, and what we're looking at is making loans at 5%, and the payment period would be seven years. So what that means for the homeowner, if they borrow the entire $7,400, and then they get their $2,000 tax credit from the United States government and decide to just pocket that and not put it towards the heat pump, their payments would be about $104 a month. So, and as far as the rebate, Jonathan, do you want to field that?
Yeah, we often run consumer rebate programs, and in this case, we would use that, that funds that we would normally allocate to a consumer promotional rebate and keep that in a separate fund for the marketing program to use to defray the outreach costs that they have. It's not very much, I don't want to, you know, create this like perception that there's a tremendous amount of money. It could be $100 to $200 per sale. But in terms of operating the Consumer Outreach and Engagement Program, those funds are significant, and they add up, and they could support the basic outreach needs that the program has.
You good, Mr. Brison? Waha Giduk?
Yeah, I try this questions for Mr. Watt. Just curious as to, I probably should know this, you know, other loan programs that the city operates, and you know, what would this look like if we were to set something up like this? It seems like Public Works would be a good committee for a good, solid conversation, but my first time wandering through this, this type of thing.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think the Public Works and Facilities Committee and the Utility Advisory Board would be good stops on this. So this proposal is a little different, I think, in that it links an energy loan to a water and sewer bill. And I'll be honest, I have some trepidation on that. Our recourse in the event of non-payment would be to turn off potable water. And there's not a great nexus in my mind between potable water and an energy investment, however good the economics may be. I think there are other issues that could be worked on, but Public Works and Facilities, the Utility Advisory Board, would be good stops for this.
Thank you. And I have a text from Madam Mayor that I'll jump in with, asking about where does the money come from to start this entire thing? And you also talked about having Having um, funds, keeping some funds available for the the people that do default. So what's the? What's the money part?
Okay, we are still on a parallel track. We're looking for the right um, kind of platform for the program. And that's something we've talked with several different organizations and uh, that's something we're working on all the time. Uh, the what we're looking at getting is a RESP loan. That's one possible source is getting a RESP loan. That's a zero interest loan from the U S government. Department of Agriculture, Rural Energy Savings Program, and uh, they loan it zero percent for twenty years and you're allowed to loan it out at five percent. We're also talking to an organization that has the capital to capitalize loans and also to uh, provide the startup capital. We assume that the startup capital. Maybe uh, two hundred thousand dollars just to be sure, but then after the first couple of years, the program should break even.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is a little bit of a follow up on the. Question with how this juxtapose. How this builds on Heat Smart's work? So I understand the economies of scale of having a. Two folks working on a team and then they're just going around and you have an electrician and an installer and a guaranteed amount of work. Part of what I believe Heat Smart is doing is assessing, you know, based on that specific house, what's a right heat pump? Number or what's the exact right type of heat pump for this house? Does it make sense to have a heat pump in this house? And Ms. Hale would know a lot more about this topic than I would. If you have the sort of structure that you've described. What if you're kind of you're like, this is our one stop shop. We've got this kind of heat pump and we're driving around installing it? How does that work if that's not the right situation for a variety of houses in the borough?
In that, in that.
Mr. Cohen.
I'm sorry. In that case, it becomes what would be called a custom job and maybe it would go back out into the marketplace. But when. We would consult with the person extensively, they could do things like walk around their house and take photos or walk around with a with their iPhone. And show it and then that would give us a, we could provide that to the installer. And then they can make an assessment and start to get an idea of what kind of heat pump would be needed. Uh, and then when they they would make a site visit, they would look the house over. Naturally. They're not going to prescribe uh, a heat pump that's not adequate or a heat pump that is overly complicated. Uh, they would, our bias would be towards simple one to one installations, which are the most have the fastest return on investment and are the fastest to install. Uh, we have a philosophy of, which I believe Heat Smart does too, of uh, heating eighty percent of the heating envelope with one unit and then. Using auxiliary heat for things like a guest room or some other room that's not used very much. So it's really kind of a different approach. Uh, where where the program itself and the installer provides that information. And naturally, we're not going to try and force a round peg into a square hole. Or vice versa, whatever.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Brison.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Uh, full disclosure, I'm a landlord. Um, but I'm thinking, is this program only available for? Low income homeowners or uh, is the thought that this would extend to? Uh, multifamily housing where the tenants aren't uh, don't have ownership in where they live? How do we benefit that level of the community?
Okay, the. A lot of those questions will be dealt with in the rulemaking phase, okay, of what are the rules for on bill finance? But in terms of multifamily. Um, the Fort Fort Collins offers utility payments on offers on bill financing on their water bill because that's how they reach multifamily housing. I believe that most multifamily housing here, I don't know if they have a separate water bill for each um, for each apartment. But they do have separate, usually separate electric meters. So A L and P, if they chose to, could off could reach those uh. Multi-family homes by offering it on their bill. And even then, we could work with A L and P to find those people and finance them.
Go ahead, Mr. Brison.
Yep. Okay, uh, my follow up question, uh, where's A L and P to this evening? Anybody? They strike me as they, that would be the appropriate entity to be here advocating for this program. As they sell electricity, they're going to benefit from more heat pumps being in the homes. That seems like it'd be the vehicle to have on bill financing. What's A L and P's position on this?
Mr. Cohen.
Well, I'm not an expert on their business, uh, but I can just tell you what I've heard from uh, the people at A L and P I've talked to and from the report that they submitted to. The Juno Assembly on their power planning for the next ten years, two years ago. They don't have plans for uh, developing new generation in the next eight years from now. What I, what they have said, what I, to me, is they're concerned about demand increases in demand by converting oil heat to electric. Uh, fortunately, they actually have the tools to address that because when you convert. Uh, electric resistance heat to a heat pump, you use one third as much electricity. So that in itself is a conservation measure. And they are the ones with the data and the um, the contact information to target those people and reach them. And on bill financing is actually an excellent way to incentivize those people to convert to a, to a heat pump.
So, Mr. Cohen, what uh, for sure, A L and P should be interested in in converting the resistance heat people to heat pumps. So have you spoken to them about uh, their interest in this or have you not?
I first spoke to Alec Mezdag of A L and P about five years ago when we first had the idea, myself and some other people at I P L. Had the idea of a rapid adoption program. Uh, there was and. Not a lot of interest then. Now I am told that uh, they are starting to research and and I've talked about it many several times since then. I'm told that now they are interested in offering it for um, electric resistance heat conversion only. And that they started to do a study, which I think will take place over the course of a couple of years and then they would go through the regulatory process. Again, that's you'd have to ask them to get their. To to get the exact information and I don't want to speak for them since they're not here tonight, but that's my understanding, but they're not interested in. On bill financing for the eighty five percent of the people in Juneau who use uh, oil, oil heat.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, Ms. Hughes Candies and then Mr. Smith.
Thanks. Another question for you, just on one of the examples. I think um. My, that was also my thought, you know, we have A L and P, we the city, we don't do the electric. So. Tying heat pumps to water billing to me seems like a little bit of a. Connection that I don't automatically make in my mind. Um. But you included an example in here and there's a letter from Fort Collins, Colorado, where they specifically include it on their utility bills. Uh, or in their water utility bills. So my question was in their letter, then it says, you know, we have multiple services. So in that example, are they also the electric?
I think they also offer it on the electric bill for single family homes, but I do want to comment about uh, about your point, which is. Not a, not a unreasonable one. One is that we're not providing electricity, we're providing a heating appliance. So. Uh, just as water supplies water. It's, it's not like trying to supply electricity, supplying appliance for people to meet their basic needs. Also, those letters, on bill financing is offered by lots of different entities. For instance, the JEMS program in Hawaii. Is not a municipality or a utility. It's a state organization that was set up to facilitate conversion to renewable energy. Uh, Fort Collins is a municipality. Uh, Opalco is a um, they're a utility that does lots of other things too. I mean. You, they do a bunch of stuff because they're a small town like us. So. There's no hard and it's often offered by electric utilities because it's a way for them to increase the amount of people using their their product. But it's by no means limited to that, nor in my opinion, should it be. It's just a really great tool for meeting your goals of. Having people be able to save a whole bunch of money on their heating bill.
Okay, Mr. Smith and then Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um. Yeah, I would, I I would, I'm glad to see the Fort Collins um, example. I I guess. I can understand the disconnect a little bit between, you know, the electrical, electrical bill and the in the wastewater. But I could also see that there would be situations, you know, a single family home. Owned and occupied by the owner who are paying both bills. There's no renter where, I mean. It's, it's just utility bills. So I mean, are those the type of situations that you would? You would be targeting, do you think? I mean, it it isn't going to apply to every ownership situation. Is that right?
Wait, I'm not completely sure I understand the scenario that you're talking about. What, what is it exactly?
Well, I was just saying, the sound is challenging. Um. I was saying that I can understand, you know, if someone owned a home and then had a renter in there like that. That might be a little strange to have the on bill financing for a heat pump on their water bill, I I think, whereas. Something owned and occupied by the owner in a single family home. They're, they're the ones paying all the bills. So I guess, I mean, it are there, are there certain type of kind of ownership situations that you would? Where in in on bill financing for waste wa- on a water bill would, you you would target first?
Yes, uh, uh, I understand. Thank you. Uh, the. It doesn't fit every single scenario. It's not ideal for multifamily situations. It's not ideal for rental situations. Although that person also that's renting the place might also be paying the electric bill. But um. We have about roughly ten thousand residences in Juneau and by that I mean excluding, that doesn't include. Commercial or multifamily or apartment buildings, ten thousand residences ranging from, you know, say five hundred square feet to. I don't know, four thousand. We we broke down the assessor's database and parsed it by by house sizes. But uh, we have about ten thousand, I would estimate that two thousand of those or eight thousand of those are probably candidates for um. For on bill, for for heat pumps. Uh, it might be slightly less, but I would say, you know, seven to eight thousand are are good candidates. And that is, remember that that residential. Space heating is about three quarters. Our our total space heating carbon footprint is about. Twenty four percent and three quarters of that is the residential housing that we are targeting. So it's not commercial, it's not multifamily, it's this this residential housing that we're trying to address with this program.
If I could add about the rental piece, that's all right.
Go ahead.
Uh, thanks. Uh, so I mean, there is, there's no good way to. Improve the energy efficiency of rental units. It's just a tough one nationally. Uh, there's a lot of organizations trying to work to crack it. Um, which is the massive split incentive uh, to tackle that. Um, what on bill can do is try to help bridge that divide the. Split incentive by allowing the uh, uh, renter to pay for. The the benefit of the new unit while they're there. And then uh, after they leave, then you figure something else out. Different programs handle it different ways. Other programs don't can, don't do it at all because it is more complicated. To do, if if you want to tackle rental units, it has to be kind of really baked into the program design. It cannot be an afterthought. Um, uh, but again, because there's really no good way to do handle rental properties, this can be one with some care and and thought put into it to to make it happen.
Okay, I have Ms. Hale and then Ms. Hughes Candies.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and this is uh, kind of a comment to a couple of the questions that have come up about. Um, why isn't A L and P doing this? And I think Mr. Cohen touched on this, that they would be willing to, I guess, do on bill financing for. All electric units, um, but not heating oil conversion to um, heat pump. So uh. As I understand, Mr. Cohen has come to the assembly because that's another option because that A L and P electric bill is not an option.
Um, Ms. Hughes Candies, oh, Ms. Mr. Cohen, you wanted to.
I'm sorry, I wanted to clarify something. I think when I first talked to A L and P five or six years ago, we talked about planning. Uh, for an, for a rapid adoption heat pump, but I don't know that we talked about on bill financing at that time. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. So I might be wrong. Thank you. Um, Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I think this question might be more to staff, but if. I'll ask you because maybe you want to say some things and that will help me better understand the. Design between. What the program would do versus what the city would do because uh, I think. What you've tried to emphasize is you don't see this as adding work, significant work to the city. Because the program would be taking care of a large part of that. So. In thinking about ways that it would potentially affect the city. Um, I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about um. What the external process looks like when uh, there's a line in here that says it would be necessary to provide a software patch between the financial software and the C B J utility billing software. And I know. Um. In our cybersecurity focused age, uh, sometimes some of the cities billing softwares might be a little bit more locked down or. Were frequently or I'm frequently shocked at the cost of uh, upgrading our software systems internally. So. If you could speak about what you think you look, that looks like from your side and then maybe my question for staff is kind of what. Your interpretation of my concerns on that are.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. I have to apologize. I should have updated that. Since I wrote that, I had a conversation with um. James Zulo, who I believe is the head of I T for the city, and we talked about it and he's the one who. Informed me that the way it would work was where I described is that they could write a script in house that would, we provide them a list of information in a format that they determined for us. And then they would write it, they would have a script that they would run and that would ingest it into the software and then kick it out again. So there would be no actual. Uh, interaction between any financial software outside of the city or within the city. What he said specifically was. Adding a line on a bill is very easy. So there's a line on a bill that says, shows the amount and says, this is the payment for your heat pump. If there's problems, call, you know, X, Y, Z, you know, the program. Um, he said, doing that is very easy. It's only when you start doing things like making calculations that it becomes complicated. So what this would be. Would avoid having to make any calculations. He said it could be done in house and it, he made it sound like it would not be a big deal.
Great, and if staff could also.
Yeah.
Answer what they think that would look like internally.
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor. So uh. You know, mechanically, something like that, I think is is resolvable. I think there are. Uh, policy issues for the the assembly that you have to think about there. Uh, and if I could just take a moment to let you know about some other efforts that are going on so you understand full context. Um, I think Mr. Holst walked in the room at some point, but J D C is applying for a rural energy savings program. Um, funding, so they're looking at a a program that would provide. Uh, commercial entities, uh, loans and business, reduce energy costs. That's a topic on its own. Uh, Spruce Root, uh, five oh one C three created with seed money by C Alaska. Uh, is a community development financial institution and they are uh, looking to establish a region wide green bank. Uh, and as a C D F I, they are eligible for E P A greenhouse gas uh, reduction funds. Uh, and they've asked for a resolution of support, other communities in Southeast to put one in. So we're going to put one on your agenda for uh, the twenty first. I think the the policy questions, and we haven't really had time to uh, lay it out in in a memo, but all these programs you have to wade through. Um, excuse me, uh, who provides the capital, who provides the technical advice? Who provides a loan qualifying? Who provides a loan servicing? Who provides the installation? And they're all, they're all slightly different pros and cons on all them. And I think. Uh, at a follow up uh, committee and the nexus with the utility. Um, Public Works and Facilities and the U A B are 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 good forums to start to flesh those things out.
So we're getting somewhat, some of these questions are super detailed about, you know. So, we're getting somewhat, some of these questions are super detailed about, you know, computer programming, which eventually would happen, and, and the assembly needs to talk about like, bigger policy, and, and it sounds like there's some interest in working on this. So, Mr. Smith, do you have, uh, some kind of motion regarding, you know, this is obviously by no means ready for any kind of decision. Go ahead.
I'll give it a shot. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, I would move that staff work with on-bill financing, I'm going to just call it proponents, to look into these details and policy considerations and technical pieces, all the stuff that we've been looking at. Um, and anyway, identify issues, concerns, maybe some places for synergy, and then report back to the Public Works and Facilities Committee, assuming the chair-
Mr. Bryson.
-there is open to that. Okay. That's my motion.
Okay.
And I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection to that? Thank you, Mr. Cohen, and all your gentlemen friends, uh, from all over the nation. Uh, we really appreciate it. Learned a lot and, um, you know, interest and lots of, still lots of questions.
Okay. Thank you for, uh, for paying such close attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You guys need a, uh, five minutes? Yep. Okay, we're going to break for five minutes. Press my button again. Um, next is ADU Grants. Mr. Manager just made it back to the microphone. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, De- There's a memorandum on, uh, accessory dwelling units. Formerly the Accessory Apartment Grant Program. Uh, this has been in committee, and there are two paths, and we're asking you to approve, uh, one of the paths tonight. Uh, so the first concept is tier-one grants, uh, expanding from our historical $6,000 up to $13,500 because of inflation, uh, because of the cost of construction, uh, to try and encourage more apartments. The second, the tier-two grants, we're asking you not do anything with that tonight, uh, in trying to figure out a way to implement, uh, affordability in a loan program. Uh, we saw some issues that we couldn't guarantee, uh, or couldn't figure out a way to ensure that that kind of program uh, wouldn't be misused. Uh, much got higher dollar amount, and we had concerns that, if, uh, somebody added a unit with an affordability component, uh, that they might not make that available to the public, or there might be some kind of an inside deal. Um, it might be difficult to track for a period of time. So we can talk about this, uh, quite a bit longer, but tonight I would be asking, uh, for you to approve the, um, grant program for tier-one grants, uh, increasing to 13,500. Uh, and if you have, uh, questions and discussion on the tier-two grant concept, uh, if you would like to ask about that, we could talk about that or save that for another day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So we have heard this before, the, in the Lands Housing and Economic Development Committee has also heard it. So, the rec- you see the recommendation at the bottom of the memo. Does anyone have questions or, um, want to, Mr. Bryson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, Mr. Watt, I completely understand why you'd be hesitant on the tier-two. Would there be a way that we could still allow for a tier-two grant, but make the unit not rentable? So that if a family had to build on, say, to create like a literal mother-in-law apartment, or were adding an accessory unit onto their house for a family member or some reason that it was that they were trying to help their family out, or they needed a bigger home, or they're, they, they couldn't move, and the thing, the kids just kept growing. I understand that we're hesitant on 50,000 because we don't want people to then turn around and do a short-term rental and, you know, use city money to generate their own little business, but could we keep it on there for people that literally needed to build it for their own family? And they could have restrictions, couldn't be-
Mr. Bryson, tier-two is not off the table or gone. The only question is, can we just move forward with one for now and still keep the idea for tier-two live? So that's, that's the ask for, for this meeting. Uh, Ms. Hale and Ms. Hughes Candies.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I like that idea about moving forward with one and, and leaving two on the table. I, I'd like to comment a little bit about two. Um, as I look through, and I, I don't, the, right under the vacancy heading on page 23, it says, "A goal of the ADU grant program is to provide grants for the creation of quality housing units at a rental level affordable to Juneau's workforce." But I couldn't see that language anywhere, anywhere, the affordable to Juneau's workforce. So that's not in our resolution. And, and I'm only bringing this up because what, it, it just calls to mind, what is our goal? Is our goal to build housing, or is our goal to house of, build affordable housing for Juneau's workforce? And maybe part of why, uh, option two got so complicated is because it's trying to do too much. And I think I, I'd be really interested as we move forward with option two, at looking at how we can scale it back. Maybe it's less money, but imposing restrictions to try to make it for affordable housing. I think every time we try to make affordable housing, that causes problems. So I would really look to, uh, making sure we understand our goals. And maybe Mr. Manager has a place where it actually says that's a goal, but I didn't know where it said that.
And it's same thing, if, would you mind, we just talk about two at another time? Because we, that, we clearly don't agree on two. It still needs work. So can we just move forward with one? Ms. Hughes Candies.
Uh, thanks. Yep, I'm, I'm good with moving forward on one, and I understand that we should do two in a more robust conversation, and I hear you, Ms. Hale, and would say, I hear you. Um, it would, the manager, are you saying, keep it in Cow or send it back to Lands? Or I'm just curious what you thought that was, because I'd love to get to it sooner rather than later.
Where do you expect to, uh, the conversation for two? I mean, it could be, would you like it in Lands? I mean, it could be in Lands, it could be in COW. We could decide that later. How about that?
Deputy Mayor, we'll work with the chairs of the bodies.
Yeah. Okay. Um, Ms. Hale.
I have a motion. It's timely. Go for it. Thank you. Um, I, uh, move that the Cow, that staff, uh, that the Cow forward the draft resolution to the full assembly for the continuation of the accessory dwelling unit grant program for tier-one grants of $13,500. I also, uh, further move that the assembly through the Cow, further discuss the tier-two grant concept, and, uh, and, uh, obviously, somebody can object to that, but the reason that I move it, that it be through the Cow is so that all assembly members are present for the conversation because Lands has been talking about this already. So, um, obviously, uh, that can be objected to.
Okay. Any objection to that motion? All right. So ordered. Thank you very much. Um, the next one, a tourism update. Oh, pardon me. Did you have a, your hand up, Mr. Jones? Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. Go ahead.
Um, so I guess since the motion's on the table, uh, object for a question, and I assume, uh, not having read Lands', um, committee, uh, meetings and things like that, that the, uh, deed restriction is, is, is legal, uh, we can do that. Um, I assume that this is a grant program, uh, but you're granting to persons that probably have a bank mortgage, or maybe even two bank morti- mortgages. Um, and you're putting a deed restriction on something that if they're spending $30,000 for construction and publicly fin- or privately financing that, and you're giving them $13,000 grant, you put a deed restriction on that. I mean, to me, that raises a lot of legal issues. I assume that committees have addressed that. And I remember years ago when we were talking about deed restrictions on, when we sold city land. And-
You have a qu- so is, Ms. Lane, do you have legal concerns about this?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, legal did address it, um, and the committee addressed it, and it's, it should be fine. Not necessarily, uh, maybe the, the best idea, but legally, it's fine.
Mr. Watt, did you, were you waving your hand to say something?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, I would just say that, uh, like all these, uh, housing programs, uh, they don't apply to everybody. Uh, so it would be have to be, uh, an applicant that was situated to, uh, accept that kind of restriction.
Uh, did you remove your objection, Mr. Jones? Okay, then that is so ordered. Next item is, uh, the tourism update. Mr. Watt? This is, well, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So there's a memorandum in your packet, and we were able to do a bit of a tourism update at, I think, the last assembly meeting, uh, in July. Uh, since we, uh, canceled or rescheduled the committee of the whole in the, in the middle of July, uh, I did take the initiative to take the, this memo, uh, and the Title III update to the Duxton Harbors Board. Uh, we had the full board, uh, sitting in committee. I see Mr. Etheridge and Duxton Harbor staff, and Mr. Yucatell, other board members, Mr. Brecker, and the audience. Uh, we had a really good discussion at the board, uh, and agreed to come back, uh, later, uh, again in August, um, working on, uh, more specific proposal. And so this portion of the discussion is, uh, trying to navigate the divide and authority between the tourism manager and the Duxton Harbors Board and the Port Director. And I think we're on a, a good discussion path at the board. Um, so we could talk about that, and then I have a few tourism updates as well, and could answer uh, questions on a variety of topic as long as you want to go. But, uh, I would, I would pause here just on the Title III uh, update and the discussions with Duxton Harbors.
Yep, thank you for clarifying. So yes, this is, this first part of the discussion is not general tourism, it's about the Title III and questions you have about that. And then we'll, we'll get into the free-ranging, what's going on with tourism in a minute. Who has questions or com- well, let's, questions first, Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I see lots of Duxton Harbor staff in the room, and I see, um, members of the board. My question was just, uh, in bringing this, what those conversations look like if with Duxton Harbors and-
Mr. Watt.
-the Port Director.
Uh, I, thank you, through the chair. Uh, I would, I would say the board was very interested, uh, very committed to their charge. Um, want it, they want to be sure that, uh, if we make a change, that it makes sense. Uh, and it's functionally good for, uh, the harbor system and for, for the port. Uh, a lot of, uh, good questions from the, uh, board perspective. I think the way the board tends to look at infrastructure, uh, and, and, uh, facilities under their control is different than the tourism manager and myself look at tourism, which is more of a policy issue. Uh, I don't know that there's necessarily a big divide, um, uh, but I fully expect the board wanting to be, uh, engaged and have a crack, uh, at a, a draft, uh, change. Um, so they, they seem eager and engaged on the topic.
Um, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, Mr. Watt, did, uh, do you anticipate discussing some of these relative, I mean, pretty significant possible changes to governance structure and, and getting their feedback? I mean, I know they're, I mean, that's pretty, it'd be a big shift, but anyway, but, uh, you're, you're planning on having that conversation and discussing those.
Mr. Watt.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, so yeah, I, I've, I've obviously laid a lot on the table here. Uh, and, and, uh, I'm not predisposed to any one particular outcome. Um, what, what I want is, uh, to figure out how to recommend changes for the most functional organization that we have, that we can have, um, recognizing that, uh, I think with the growth in visitation, uh, there's going to be a lot in continued assembly focus on managing, uh, cruise ship industry. Uh, and the board, you know, by and large, I don't think is focused on that same area, uh, but they are focused on, um, the health of the department, um, and the operations of their facilities. So, uh, we'll, we'll work through it. Um, I, I think there are a lot of ways to skin this cat.
More questions? Do you have a question?
No.
Okay, I, I, I have one for the body then. Just the Title III stuff is one thing, the Title 85 is another. Are there, you see what the manager's laid out in the memo, just confirming that, that it is what I believe, and is that basically everyone is, wants to go forth with Title 85, um, amendments? Is that correct? Kind of? No one's objecting. So go ahead, Ms. Hale, you want to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I, I moved that, um, we forward Title III as included in the packet to the assembler, to the assembly for public hearing and adoption, and I also moved that we forward Title 85, uh, for continued discussion to the Duxton Harbors Board. Uh, and, and, uh, I'm, I'm guessing that might come back to us in a joint meeting with the Duxton Harbors Board or in some form like that, but I'm very interested in that, and I'm heartened to hear that they've taken a look and been willing to dig into it and ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection to that motion? Mr. Jones.
Uh, objection for a question, I guess. Um, I followed the budget process. Looking at, uh, basically what's on page 33, and looking at the Tourism Department responsibilities. Um, my last history, uh, was a single person, uh, was a tourism manager working in the manager's office. Um, this looks like, um, staff, and so I was just curious that, and the budget process approved, it started July 1, you still have just a tourism manager and nobody else? If I was any place but the assembly, I'd want a fiscal note. What is the implications of all this stuff?
Mr. Watt.
And, and so I guess that's my question. Um, that'll come up if the resolution comes before the assembly, I mean, actual resolution or ordinance. Um, what's the impact?
Mr. Watt.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, uh, there's no proposal to increase staff, uh, under the tourism manager. So it's one FTE in the manager's office. Um, the, the working approach is to fund projects through the CIP, um, structure for when we have a planning project or an infrastructure project, but there is not, the goal is not to add, uh, staff and grow that, uh, program.
And so, any, any amendments to Title 85 has to consider that. Go ahead, Mr. Jones. Yep.
Um, so in sort of looking at the next phase, that's not part of the motion, but, um, it seems to accomplish this with just one person. The expertise of Duxton Harbors, the expertise of the Port Director, the expertise of other people are going to be needed and, and, and used. Um, so hopefully that's part of the consideration of, you know, what, what you do with the other structures that we already have in place, um, that I assume the tourism director is using, uh, to get their particular job done. Um, and, uh, so, um, hopefully maybe part of that could be part of, uh, uh, packet that comes with this in terms of, you know, how all those kind of resources that tourism manager is supposed to coordinate. If you're going to rearrange all of the deck chairs around all that support. So, I'll remove my objection, but I think those are serious questions that are going to have to be addressed.
Appreciate that, Mr. Jones. Okay, hearing no, uh, objections. Now to the, uh, tourism update part of the tourism discussion. Mr. Watt.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So you have, uh, in the packet, the memo from, uh, Ms. Pierce, uh, Campy here tonight is, uh, actually meeting with industry officials. There's a lot of information, uh, in there. The regional engagement continues to go well. A couple of, uh, uh, hot topic, uh, issues. Uh, we did meet with the Forest Service about their permitting, um, process for visiting the glacier, and appealed to them to try and be, more engaged with the community so that, uh, tour operators can't, um, create the kind of problem they created this summer by overselling early in the summer. Uh, they've agreed to engage, uh, and we expect, um, in the next month, that the first step is the Forest Service is going to convene, uh, those tour operators together, uh, to start to work on, on some ideas. Uh, so some- Uh, so some progress on the Forest Service side. Uh, I also do know that frustration in some quarters on this issue went high and comments went all the way up to our, uh, senators offices and we've got a little poking on that front as well. Um, so we're trying to get the Forest Service, um, looking at this in a different way that, that will help with some of our issues.
Um, Ms. Hale.
Thank you. Um, uh, thank you for that update. I'm really glad that they're engaging. Um, I'm actually very disappointed in the lack of coordination and I think between industry who brought these people here and the Forest Service, that then has had an impact on people riding our city buses. Um, and I, I, um, I, I, anyway, um, I'll hold that thought. Um, do you have an update on how it's going on the buses? Are people being left behind?
Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. That was my next topic. So, uh, I, I think Ms. Pierce had an update. Um, we are dropping a few people, but they are sending out a secondary bus as they're able, when they have drivers. Um, we are seeing big numbers of people, um, you know, regularly somebody texts one of us. Uh, line of twenty or more people at the back loop bus stop waiting to get on the bus to come back to the dock or, um, people visiting Juno email the manager's office and say, I've got a family group of fifteen and how do I ride the bus to the glacier? Um, so there's, there's a lot going on there. Um, we're kind of just doing the best we can through the rest of the summer, uh, and transit is trying to send out, uh, relief vehicles when we lose, uh, people. Um, I've got a little more on the circulator study planning, but maybe let's leave it there in case there are questions about capital transit.
You have another one? Uh, Ms. Hale and then Ms. Hughes Candies, capital transit.
Uh, thank you. And, and I, I, I just would add that these are great big companies and they're worldwide companies. And if it was me and I had created this problem for these residents of Juno, I would fly in, you know, I would like helicopter in little buses to take people right to that stop, uh, you know, the bus stop so that they have to walk up to the glacier. I, I, I'm kind of in disbelief that, um, all of these forces have, have coalesced and it has become our problem. And our problem right down to the level of people who ride the bus to get to works.
Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I will echo Ms. Hale's frustration, which I don't think she uses that word so much as disbelief, but I certainly feel frustration that we are doing the best we can to triage and not getting better collaboration between those entities. It's great that we're sending out another bus when we have drivers available, but you just hit the nail on the head. When we have drivers available and right now we have a hurting transit system because we don't have enough drivers. So where are the, the bus companies in this? Where are the crew, uh, is Ms. Pierce asking for support? I'm sure your office is, um, they certainly have probably more bus drivers right now than we do, and they have a variety of bus shapes and sizes. And I'd love to see one of those following the city bus or, you know, being around. And if someone is left off, taking them out to where they need to go and then, you know, going back to their regular routine. So have we made that request and?
Mr. Watt.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, uh, we've talked about that and then, uh, one of the comments I got was we can give you buses, but we don't have drivers either. Um, really, I, the truth of the matter is the cruise lines themselves, for the most part, are not in the transportation business. The tour operators, for the most part, are Juno-based businesses. It's, it's our businesses that oversold the permits early. And the problem is, um, the problem is not predictable or schedulable. Um, when we, when we get a pulse of, of tourists on the bus, it's in that moment. Uh, and there's nobody but us that can try and dispatch and do something about it. It's unfortunate, but I think it's just going to be the way it is for the next four weeks or so.
Okay, so, so Ms. Hale asked, or someone asked about the numbers of people. Do we have a, I, I don't see that in here, like left behind. Is it once a day, once a week, five times a day? Or do we not know? You know, what's the magnitude of people left behind? Is it, did I miss it in the memo?
I am diving in there. I think Ms. Pierce had information for you at the assembly meeting.
Yeah, last, she did, but I didn't know if there was any, so, okay, just left.
Yeah.
Um, if you're going through the memo, the first part of the memo, I have a question. The hotline statistics, um, I don't know that people know about the hotline anymore. I mean, I, I don't know. It's not really advertised or they don't believe that it does anything, so they're not going to call. Just the temperature that we've heard as assembly members is much worse than last year. And the numbers don't reflect that. So either people don't have faith in the hotline or they don't even know about it. Um, have we done out more, any more outreach? What, what are we doing about that? Or are we doing anything?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. In fact, in fact, since this memo was written in mid-July, the numbers have shot up. And I think largely as a result of, uh, media stories saying not that many calls to TBMP. Uh, so we, we are getting more calls, uh, and they are focused on, uh, I would say primarily tours, primarily tour operations where, uh, Juno citizens recreate, but, uh, up substantially.
So I'd just like to see, uh, at least us do some more social media posts or something about it just so people I don't, yeah, I don't know if people even know about it. And the people that know about it that we're calling, they're not calling because nothing, they're over it, depending on their problem. Ms. Hughes Candies and then Mr. Smith.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just have one question about the whale watching. Um, so Ms. Pierce provided an update on the data that we had from the Brait study. And so I had a question on that and then I'll tie it into a comment question on the whale watching group that met. So right now it sounds like, we, you know, we know who's using CBJ docks. We don't know about private docks. So would we need to take an affirmative step if we wanted to track? I mean, I think in the past we've talked about, well, what if we limited the number of, what if you needed, uh, there are only so many whale watching boats allowed at CBJ docks, but we wouldn't have control over that because of the private docks. So do we need an affirmative step just to get an accurate census of how many for hire vessels are working in this industry period? We don't have anything like that, right?
Mr. Watt.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think we do. So uh, uh, the whale biologist, uh, who, who, uh, tracks this program, uh, I think has data. And it's, it's our understanding that, uh, uh, Juno, it has most of the whale watching in the state. So we can give you um, good statistics on that. And you're, you're right that, uh, whale watching vessels dispatched from a city facility at Satter Harbor, uh, nearby Fisherman's Bend, uh, and then further around towards the ferry terminal, there are, are private facilities in there as well, but we can get that data.
I, for one, would love to get, uh, count from using NOAA's statistics. And I'd love to actually hear from NOAA again. I know they presented to the visitor industry task force. And then I know that the travel Juno and NOAA and the city were all involved with that meeting of the whale watch owners. But it looks like the work that they're doing is primarily on a public outreach campaign. And I don't know if you know more about that. That does, it, it also says implementing more stringent practices, but I'm not sure kind of the good of the public outreach campaign or how that addresses any of the issues. So you could speak to what that piece is at all.
Uh, I can. So, so Ms. Pierce, um, working with, uh, the whale watching, uh, companies and, and captains has uh, expressed, uh, clearly the, uh, public feedback that we're getting around, uh, the activity. Uh, and those operators have met together and they have a work group. Uh, and they're struggling on how to self-regulate themselves, but I think that's kind of necessarily the first step. Uh, and one of their conclusions was, nobody's telling our story. Um, and, and I think part of their story is, um, what it looks like from shore, um, may be completely compliant with um, the NOAA marine mammal protection restrictions. I think that's part of it. Um, there are other whale watching impacts to the, uh, that we hear from the public, uh, noise of vessels wakes on on fishing and wakes on, um, private, uh, property. Uh, but there is that group that is meeting and that was one of their outcomes is, uh, to try and tell their story. So I haven't heard that, but that's what it came from.
Okay, thanks.
Um, other questions? Did I, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, and, um, a, a few questions, I guess. Um, it, it also interested in whale watching boats and curious to hear what the story is. Um, on flight seeing, it, or it, is the aircraft number, that's where a complaint about helicopters would be under that aircraft number? Okay. So I think the ten people that have reached out to me about helicopter noise evidently don't know about the number because there's only eight people who've complained seemingly to TBMP. Um, that's, I think, actually the biggest complaint I hear, um, just consistent and put in relatively loud, um, helicopter noise in the valley. I'm sure this is a fraught subject that has been duked out over the years, but I mean, do they all take the same flight paths or how has that been determined? And like, anyway, do they, what do they have to do there? I'm sure there's a great history, but.
Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, yes, indeed, the issue, the issue is, is fraught, uh, and has been around for a long time. Uh, one of the things to remember on flight seeing is, uh, on a, on a clear day, when the operators can get higher quicker, the noise complaints are lower. On overcast days, they're flying lower. Uh, so early in the summer, I think we had a lot of overcast weather, uh, which is going to result in more noise. Where people can hear it. Um, and, and I think, you know, aircraft noise for flight seeing is, uh, highly specific to where you live and how you feel about it. Uh, but a difficult issue for sure.
I would say, uh, to answer, yes, there are specific paths. They all don't take the same ones, but they all have specific ones that they do take. And they try to get up high as fast as they can. But as Mr. Watt said, when it's cloudy and there's a um, long study about, uh, helicopter and aircraft noise from, I don't know, twenty years ago. The city actually put, uh, recorders around town to actually me- me- measure decibel levels. So it's a big, long thing. You could find it. I'm sure it's more than you want to know, but there's a lot of, a lot of routes and noise levels in that study. And it'd be interesting to see if they're any different than before. Um, but what, one of the things it concluded was decibels, you can measure decibels, but not annoyance. Uh, so if it's a, a helicopter that's rescuing a puppy, you're not as mad about it as it's a helicopter that's taking tourists. It's just kind of the actual decibel level is correlated, but not predictive of how mad you get. That's basically long and long.
Uh, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I'll just comment on that. And then I have a separate comment, but, um, uh, Mr. Smith, you'll have to come visit me in the valley and I can show you all the routes because I know all the routes. And it's actually very interesting that they are very disciplined about it. They put their helicopters up one after the other, after the other, and then they fly in a line. So they're really trying to minimize the path, but if you're in that path, it's loud for a brief period of time and it's really loud. Anyway, um, I, I got all those routes down because I'm kind of centrally located. But I would like to talk about over, over capacity and I'd talk a little and then there will be a question, I promise, buried in this. So I think we are all hearing great dissatisfaction and it's not just noise. It's the bus, it's downtown. It's just tourists are everywhere. There's tourists on the trails by the glaciers and lots of dissatisfaction within the community and lots of people within the community are concluding that in this year, this sort of COVID rebound year that we've gone past capacity and we're at overcapacity. Um, we have had a lot of six-ship days. I think every week there are six-ship days and there are huge ships and we've had lots of conversation about that. So I'll comment, but there's a question. We, the, we have a five-ship limit that was negotiated, um, by Ms. Pierce and, and Mr. Manager. And I, I appreciate that. And I know that wasn't easy. And that goes into effect, as I understand it, next year. And we've had lots of comments about five enormous ships still doesn't seem to be very effective. However, since we own two docks, we can decide what size ships are at our docks. And my question is, is this beginning to get us to a point where we can, we ourselves as a city can address the capacity that we haven't really been able to do up to this point?
Mr. Watt.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, um, yes, and we've been having those exact conversations with, uh, cruise ship industry and we've been uh, expressing, um, our concern, uh, that we're hearing a lot of pushback from the community, uh, and better for the industry to figure out scheduling, um, to reduce, uh, intensity, um, strategically than for us to use, uh, heavy hand. And I think if, if CBJ wanted to, um, dial back visitation, we have some levers. Um, none of them are easy. Uh, they tend to be blunt. Um, but, uh, they would start with things like limiting the size of a ship at anchor. Um, because the one at anchor, uh, lighters to our cruise ship terminal creates a lot of congestion at that location. So thinking about how we manage, um, ship at anchor and the size of the ship at anchor. Uh, thinking about the scheduling of how and when that ship at anchor uh, comes in and comes into the port. Right now we've, we've appealed to the companies to think about uh, scheduling arrivals differently to the extent they can. So today, today's a Monday and tomorrow's a Tuesday. So on Monday and Tuesday, uh, we generally are getting uh, four or five ships, bang, 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 in about an hour and a half period that puts a big crush uh, on transportation downtown. And then there's a crush on tour activity from about one to five. So all that tour activity can be compressed, uh, in a way that the public sees it in a very intense manner. So we're having those uh, conversations. We also own two docks. Um, and at some point we could talk about utilization and ship size at those docks if we wanted to. Um, so there, that conversation, um, is being had more and more frequently. Uh, right now, our, our direction from the assembly essentially is through the VITF recommendations, which were made in the context of a 1.3 million visitation summer where we were thinking that we were going to get to about 1.5 and we've kind of blown past that, um, this year. So yes, there is a lot of conversation on this topic. Uh, I don't have any, um, demonstrable action uh, tonight to report on that. I have several other topics, um, and maybe it'll, we'll actually circle back around to this topic at the end when I hit those other topics. I think some of these updates are, are kind of germane to that question. So maybe Deputy Mayor, if I can just seize the mic for a little bit and then we'll.
Okay, and we'll go, if you, uh, want to follow up after he's done, you're, you're on, uh, Mr. Watt.
We're wrapping up the circulator study, which is recommending some ideas and improvements, and we'll try and get that to you. Um, we think that as a result of what we've seen this summer, um, with capital transit, uh, where that we'll be recommending passenger fees to the transit system and some changes. E- even if the tour operators are doing a good job managing their permits, everybody's got a phone, everybody's got Google Transit, finding a $2 bus ride is, is too easy. Uh, and we're just going to have to adapt. And since we serve the downtown, um, that's, I think, part of our future. So future date, you'll get circulator. Uh, we've been talking to, uh, internet, uh, phone providers about connectivity and data availability. Uh, other communities are having the same issue, Sitka notably. Uh, we're, uh, trying to push on, uh, the providers to uh, provide us more capacity. One of the cruise lines has offered their, uh, some of their engineers and counseled us on how they uh, uh, deal with this issue at other parts of their business. Disney offered their, uh, engineers and how they deal with data surges at their theme parks. So we've got some help on, on that. Hopefully we can make some progress. Um, we've had a number of people reach out to We've had a number of people reach out to us about other communities. That are restricting or contemplating restricting cruise activity. So we get questions about. What's Bar Harbor Maine doing? What's Monterey, California doing? What's Key West Florida doing? And interestingly, people from those communities often call us at CBJ and talk to some of our. People who are active in these circles. As well. The Bar Harbor one. Is particular interest. They had a citizens initiative. Which I think would be challenging to implement. So the citizens initiative is to limit. To 1,000 passengers a day. In Bar Harbor, there are no docks. And the lightering, the ships are at anchor and they lighter to a private facility. So how you would, you know, be on the dock with your clicker, you know, your number thousand, you can come and your number thousand one. You can't come, probably not practical. They're in federal court. And that judge. Is expected to issue a ruling in November. But getting back to Assembly Member Hale's question, key to this is owning the facility. If you want to influence volume. Owning the facility or controlling somehow through lease language is is really important. If you don't want to be in kind of the laissez faire position. The last thing, just a brief update on the Huna Totem Dock Proposal. So Huna Totem was at the Planning Commission last month. They got a partial approval. For their project, the commission broke the project in two, gave them a partial approval. They're back at the commission. Tomorrow night for the second piece. On Friday, we received an appeal of the first. Conditional use permit. You will get that at the assembly meeting under new business on August 21. And I'll remind you again of the memo from January of 21. Where I recommended that the assembly engage on the topic. But if there's an appeal that you decide to send that towards a hearing officer, so that will be the discussion on the the 21st. So those are those are the things I wanted to get to, and hopefully that kind of colors. The conversation that are preempted a little bit.
And the part about the appeal, what Ms. Lane, what comments do you have about what the assembly should be talking about regarding that permit?
Thank you. Madam Chair, the assembly at this point really shouldn't discuss. That until you get further direction from this right, who will be advising the assembly on that appeal.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Hale, Mr. Smith, Mr. Bryson.
Why don't you let them go because I've already spoken.
Okay, Mr. Smith, Mr. Bryson.
You, you know, looking at the the complaints and everything, I realized maybe a more probably useful and informative. Source of data is is a survey. Are we going to do? Was there plans for another? Whatever visitation survey or something this year?
Mr. What? What? Remind us what the survey schedule is.
Annually. Okay, very good.
Okay, you can.
I have something another. Topic, but I can't back.
You want to go? Go ahead.
Under the under the commercial recreational use part, page 36 of the packet. I think maybe this came up at a previous meeting, but I just wanted to confirm, you know. So it says the Assembly approved funding for a commercial recreational use study to help inform the locations for future source. Shore excursion development. Including an update of city owned trails for commercial use. I guess. When I when we did that in the budget process, I mean, it was kind of. In the. Decision about commercial use of the Pioneer Road. And I guess I just want to make sure it's not just, oh, where else might we do commercial use or do we need to build more it's? Are there? Are there are there locations that we are that we would anyway, as part of a conversation that we will not allow commercial use like that is? That is the intent of the that's a a goal of the of the plan, correct?
Mr. What?
Deputy Mayor, yes, confirming that the really it's all going to be on the table. So so. Where or if commercial use is going to be allowed? And an outcome of that is should we be looking at adding a new trail facility for commercial use?
Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I wanted to point a like a different perspective out as we're talking about being at capacity over capacity. And I'd like to remind everybody that it took Juno 30 years to get to 2019 cruise industry level. It was 30 years of businesses developing. People having ideas. It took 30 years to get there to be able to service 1.3 million people. We turned an industry off. Very rare occasions as that happened. I couldn't really find something that was relevant. But then, after two years of an industry being completely turned off, we said, hey, turn on right now. It takes a tremendous amount of energy, thought, resources, just to get one operation going. And after two years of having an industry completely shut down, we said, turn everything that you have back on. A very, very difficult task. For an industry that has to kind of restart every year. That was the coldest hard start to get an industry turned back on. Next year's numbers are already in and they're flat. There's not growth next year. We have reached kind of that natural capacity. I wanted to point this out because we are the same problems that are plaguing. The reason why we don't have bus drivers and the reason why the tourism feels intense right now. There's not enough staff members to satisfy just the regular op the the operations of June during the summer. This year is better than last year. Next year is going to be better than this year. And since we're predicted to be flat, it's going to be easier for the industry to kind of catch up. To the level of operations that we're at right now. It does not surprise me that it feels intense overcapacity. Because the tourism industry is having a heck of a time. Getting itself all the way turned back on. And so I would hate for us to judge the tourism industry. After they they're trying to get their act together. They really are. But they're plagued by the same problems. The same reason we don't have enough bus drivers is the same reason there's not enough glacier guides and the same reason there's not enough hiking guides. Until we continue to make the the situation in June better for every business and every industry and every. Level of worker has access to housing. That's how we're going to make tourism feel less intense. We could do a whole bunch of things to tourism right now that would harm the industry that would harm the economics of June. But if we would focus on the solutions that would improve this entire situation. Like continuing to work on housing. And. When it comes to whales, here's my one answer to that. How do you make people love whales? Yes, send them on a whale watching trip. It's that simple. Thank you for the time, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Bryson. Okay, question, Ms. Hale.
Thank you. And Mr. Bryson, that was a good perspective to share with us. And I really appreciate it. And I know there's a lot of a lot of validity in that perspective. We have COVID rebound going on and and the ships are over the capacity that they should even normally be at. Part in part, I'm certainly I'm glad that we have a five ship limit. Taking taking effect next year because that starts to. Starts to keep that that level down, but I'm also asking these questions because I want to help. Force that balancing. So it's important for the industry to know. That Juneites are really, really feeling it right now. And. Now sadly that our glacier has made national news, we might have even more people coming to see. The glacier in the future. So that might make it even worse. So. My my questioning of Mr. Manager is. That. We have the the VITF report that was written for 1.3 million up to 1.5. We're beyond that now. If we wanted to do something different, it is this body that could direct you to. Change the lightering to put smaller ships at our docks if we felt that that was necessary, taking what Mr. Bryson has said into account. Thank you.
Okay. Are there more questions or more things you need to know for future things you want to work on? We haven't really had a broad tourism discussion in a while.
I have one thing.
Realizing it's almost nine o'clock and we have a couple more things. So and the other couple of things should be short. If we make them short. Ms. Hale.
Thanks so much. I just wanted to. I appreciate the caution from our attorney, Ms. Lane. And and. And Ms. Wright to not talk about the Norwegian or the Huna Totem. Project because we have that appeal before the assembly. I'm glad that we're going to be looking at that on the 21st. I just want to put out there. It's a little bit frustrating to not be able to talk to about that. At this point, there's a lot to be said and a lot of questions coming from the community. So thank you.
I miss you, Scandies.
Mine would just be that I request that at this body, we. Take another look at whale watching or hear from Noah, have them in here, have the same conversation about what our. Powers are versus what they're doing and some whale watching folks in there.
Yep, you heard that. Thank you. If there's nothing further on that. Two more things shouldn't be that long information item. You read the memo from in the packet regarding outside the cap. Mr. Watt, anything you wanted to say?
I do. We have a guest here tonight. We're excited. Mr. Frank Hauser, the new superintendent. He's made it this long and he's seen what he does. And so. Frank is is here. We met staff with him the other day. And we were all impressed his knowledge about school funding, laws around school funding, what it all means. There obviously there's the second memo in the packet. Sent back to the state signed by the School Board of Education Chair. So there's obviously a lot on this topic. I would ask if Mr. Hauser could just come up and say hi. And maybe just take a few minutes of your time, but a wealth of knowledge on these topics.
Hey, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Assembly. My name is Frank Hauser. I'm the new superintendent of June School District. Just a little bit about myself. I've been an educator in Alaska for 25 years. I previously served as the superintendent of the Sika School District. And before that, I was the principal of one of the largest high schools in the state of Alaska for five years. I'm actually a graduate of Alaska Public Schools myself from Matt Sue Valley and really from the days of teaching adaptive aquatics as a high school lifeguard and Palmer. And throughout my career, I've had one principle that's guided all my decisions and that's what's best for kids. And that question informs every single decision that I make and will make as a superintendent of the June School District. I also believe strongly in transparency, collaboration, open communication. I'm really here and I just introduced myself if there were any questions. But I also just wanted to talk about, you know, kind of moving forward. If you have any questions about school funding, if you have any questions about, you know, what's going on in the June School District, please don't hesitate to ask. In October, I'll be hosting for new school board members and assembly members opportunity to visit our schools. And see firsthand all the wonderful things that are actually taking place and going on in our schools. I just wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself and to provide some additional information. I'm looking forward to working with the assembly in partnership of educating our students. And just on a personal note, my wife and I have really been enjoying the June weather. We've been loving the sun. I think everybody was exaggerating about all the rain or at least keeping it secret. You know, so we don't get any more tourists coming through. So with that, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Superintendent Hauser. Thanks for coming. Welcome to June. I really appreciate your being here. Yeah, it doesn't rain. I don't know. That's just a myth. And any questions for Superintendent Hauser? Not not now. It's thank you for staying so long. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Mr. What? Any questions about the memos, the school district update memo, Mr. Ms. Hale?
Thank you, Madam Madam Chair. I think that this memo is saying that the school board. And the school district are going to budget with that money that deed sort of said they couldn't. Is that correct? I think that's what this is ending with.
Superintendent Hauser, you want to take that one?
Yeah, to the chair, if I'm understanding the question correctly. The memo that was in the packet that was from deed and sent to the district on June 28. I believe is the date on that one. 29th, actually. The there's there's a little bit of uncertainty about what that memo is actually saying. And that's really what the board's response to the Department of Education is requesting is more clarification with citing specific. You know, kind of. The ESEA, specific regulations around how that money is being spent. The bulk of the money that was being used in that ordinance was for people transportation. People transportation is excluded from the disparity test and for the equalization funding. And so that should not be an issue as well as that. The. The reference has been that the feds are driving this and that they are concerned about failing the disparity test. To my knowledge, the state of Alaska has not failed the disparity test. They did fail it at one point, but the federal government worked with the state to. Work on another methodology that they could use to determine equalization and pass the disparity test, which they did. They've passed a disparity test from that time when they failed for FY22, 23, and they've actually passed the disparity test for FY24, which is this current year that we're going into. And so. We're waiting for clarification because people transportation rally. Those are all community services. And those should not count based on the regulations that the US Department of Ed have around impact aid. Those should not count towards the revenues and expenditures because they are community services. So we're still waiting for clarification on that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again. Thanks for the answer. No more questions for you. Thanks for sticking around. Okay, last item. Childcare update. You see the memo, a short memo. Actually, staff has already prepared the deappropriation ordinance. So that's on its way. Anything you'd like to say that's not in your memo, Mr. Bar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we are introducing that the appropriate or planning to introduce that the appropriation ordinance at the next assembly meeting. This is this is brief. We last talked about childcare in April. We are pretty confident. Still haven't received the documents, but pretty confident that we received a $2 million grant that we applied for that we told you we were applying for back then in April from the state. Which will supplement and allow us to greatly enhance. The Assembly's childcare programs this fiscal year and next fiscal fiscal year. That grant has to be entirely spent in the current fiscal year, assuming we get it. And that's the reason for the deappropriation ordinance so that we can move local money into FY25. And have a have a smooth increased two year program rather than a gigantic one year program that then comes off a cliff in FY25.
Thank you, Mr. Bar. That makes sense and congratulations on getting that grant. It's really great. Any questions at this point at nine o'clock, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, for the time check. Just so I'm. Clear. The current this plan you presented here, so you can double the size of the per child stipend program in FY24 and FY25. But assuming no additional funding to these sources here that that would fall in 26.
Mr. Smith, that is correct.
Mahal Gita.
Yeah, and apologize if I missed this discussion at at a meeting that I may have missed, but. Remember when we were we were appropriating this, there was a discussion, I think the motion came from the mayor. To see what it would look like to pull in school facilities and. The the rally program into. The city and borough of June. I'm just wondering where where we're at with that process. Hopefully, it's a quick answer.
Mr. Mr. Bar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The the last the last we discussed this, we were. We 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 my my recollection of that conversation and happy to take different direction if the assembly has it was to. Look at the other programs in town and see if there was a. Kind of fairness or equity reason to. All those programs that aren't currently included into this program, essentially to look at the playing field and see what. What those different programs were compensating at and and we did that and currently. Are still targeting those entities generally in the private sector that are able to pay the lowest wages. To their to their staff. Does that make sense?
And I'll me just piggyback on the on Mahal Gita's question. Where is the rally issue? School districts have been talking about rally for at least three years, doing something different with rally and yet and we're still doing rally. So. Where is that conversation? Is that conversation happening?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes. Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we are.
Meant that too, right?
That, that I recall this conversation now. Um, we do have a meeting scheduled with the school district. We were, our, we've had one meeting uh, with the school district on this topic before Mr. Hauser started. Uh, we focused that meeting on community schools. We still have a lot of work to do on both of those topics.
I don't think we need a motion because they already did, did this. You don't need, you, you're doing the thing. Well, yeah, this was from last week or last two, whatever. It was from last time. Yeah, you want to make a motion? Go ahead. Okay. Anything else, any other topic to come before the committee, the whole today? It's really hot in here. Everybody is really hot in here. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and your uh, paying, still paying attention. Uh, we're adjourned.